Yeah.
I don't know why, in fact, the reason why. That's the reason it's cool.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, but.
Do you have mics on for anybody?
You have some?
We have this.
All the mics. I've got two. Can I do a little bit of that? This is from. I'm going to go ahead and show you.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. The.
Right. Yes. I.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Sorry. Thanks.
Well, real. Uh. I was. Yeah. Towards the.
And then. I don't know.
But you have to. Great. It's like. You should have the. Have any. She.
Right. Mark it off.
How did? Yeah. They. I'm really good. Bye. Why you? Yeah. Is the. I used to. See, I come. Totally. I think. We just accept. He's.
I'm sure.
You're. You might have. Oh, thanks. That's a way to reduce. I call it. Take it home. Every male. First. Blue. Already now. Lady counter. This is what we call. All. Lane. I mean. I mean. Please.
One of that.
No. I would have. It. We. We. What? See. I don't. I. Don't. Trust. I go back and pay. My. Thank you. Thank you very much. I. Why? Sure.
That's just.
You get. It's.
She's.
These are. Anything on. On. What? People are. Talking about. You know. They. Don't. They. They. You have.
Why? Obviously.
I'm not. I'm. So. I'm. So. Now. I feel. Six. Yeah. Okay. With. So. You. You know. I don't see. The. I. Yeah.
Now.
You. So. I'm. Wait. Yeah. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. Yes. 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 This. I don't. Yes. I. I. Yeah. This. Yeah. You. Keep. Okay. Perfect.
Yeah.
Six. There. I'm. Yeah. Yeah. No. Wouldn't have to. That's the. It's not. A little more even there. First. So. But. Yeah. That would be. Yes. That. I'll. That. Yeah. Yeah. See, we did. They were. Okay. Because. May. So. I made. I want. People. Just. Yeah. Sorry. Yeah. Yeah.
I start. Like a most. I don't know what I had.
Most. I.
Those. Yes.
Yeah.
I don't add. Number six. Like a most. First. Savings.
I'll say.
Go.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't have. Seven. Three. Blank. Figure. First.
Go. Paul.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
All right. Item number nine, discuss and possibly take action on even a quarter percent sales tax to help paying jail debt.
That's number eight. There's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Number eight. I apologize for that. Open discussion on jail debt and finances. Apologize. But go ahead.
Right now, there is. Thirty one prisoners. Incarcerated. Last count, we had our average cost per prisoner per day was thirty two dollars and seventy four cents. Just want to remind everybody, that's a thousand fifteen dollars a day. That's thirty one thousand four hundred sixty five dollars a month. That's three hundred and seventy seven thousand five hundred eighty dollars a year. They didn't have any problems up there mechanical. Speak of, or at least that's what was told me. I did not. I did it by. And I guess to, as far as the finance, Paul. The next item on the agenda will probably.
We. Discuss that. Look down. Item number nine, discuss. Probably take action on these. Sales. Okay. Just. Just on camera, let's talk enough for all the word. We ask for his opinion. I'm using general fine money. Pay on the jail debt and he has given us a letter stating that it is legal. Just keep everybody in the big where we're at. Is there any more discussion on that?
Anybody wants a copy of this letter? It's available.
Yeah. Look in my. I don't.
County clerk's office.
Is there any more discussion allowed? Number nine. I've not seen.
Question, Paul. Did you receive a letter, Office fifteen? From a bank first? Hey.
I have not received one. I read the one that you. You showed me.
You want more? Did I get you?
And you tell me that. For.
You want me to read this or? Three.
Just give them a general idea of that.
We, county received a letter from Bank First, Ms. Tammy Ingles, Assistant Vice President. Uh, which is the person in charge of our bonds. And. She basically says in the letter, and this is also available.
Now.
Uh. Describes the.
McCurk. Where's this?
Pledges that have been made for the refinanced junior debt. Uh, the full three quarter.
Okay.
And the bottom line of this is, is please regret the remaining seventy four hundred and sixty eight dollars that you were short. In order to meet requirements to move there for stock accounts. So basically, she has sent us a notice telling us to keep our escrow payments current. This was, uh, Office fifteen this month.
Yeah.
This is available if anybody wants a copy of it.
There's no more discussing on that. We're going to look down to item number ten and Steve.
Excuse me, Paul. What's your decision?
Oh. Well, as of right now, we agreed to put seventy four hundred over there to make. That keep it current next month. And. I had made a comment. Once about. Just setting some money aside, you know, and put it in that account so it'd be there and then. Leave it as you and. I was like. I'm going to say, well, I do it by the month. So. As of right now, we're. We're. We're doing the transfer. Of seventy four hundred.
Clark, what's your opinion?
Just. Are you talking about just starting with the positive to quarter percent?
No. We're, what we're talking about doing instead of making a whole quarter percent deposit. We're talking about only paying the shortage each month. Uh, from the tax deposits to the escrow account. Uh, last month, we were short seventy four hundred and change. This month will be, yeah, the twenty fifth of this month, we'll be short another. A lot of dollars. This is going to be a variable because the taxing time is up to.
How far is it?
And basically, what this is doing, it's not taking the full quarter cent out, as we agreed to do. It's only taking out the shortcut, but it is at least keeping our escrow. Required escrow deposits current.
Okay.
The reason we just started going in arrears with it is, is we had excess money from land auction. Uh, that we had last April, and Gail has been consuming that as needed. Uh, from that account. That, all that money has been expended. So now, we have to cough this difference up.
Okay.
And. The shortage last month was seventy four hundred. And the shortage this month is going to be eleven thousand one hundred. But at least we're staying current with our agreement to keep the escrow paid out. This is better, I think, than avenue to go, and we think that. If we.
No, 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 no.
Pay this and it satisfies the bank's need, they don't, maybe they won't call the full quarter. If they don't call the full quarter, that leaves an extra sixty thousand dollars.
Well, according to the, the post or agreement that I have, the full quarter is. Is not called for anyway. It's only the amount needed of.
Correct.
And I'm, I'm okay with it, doing it on a monthly basis.
And that's to see, you know. I'm telling you, next week, we're, we're going to sign the transfer. So. Done deal.
So it has been approved to pay that. You are approving to pay that amount?
They are approved.
We already have.
We approved it.
It's in the minutes.
Yeah.
It's already, it's in the minute of the minute. Mail. That being said. Steve. You're on, you're at number ten.
Okay.
I'm.
I, I really.
To discuss Perry Loop Road. I mean.
Uh, it's actually South Perry Loop is the route that I think that's in question. Um, and I'm here to answer any questions. Seems like there's been a lot of confusion. And all I can say is. From what I found out is. Uh, Commissioner prior to the current one had actually started on the section line road to the north. And then the current commissioner just picked it up and, and went on from there. Now, since it's in the same area and serves the general beneficiaries in that area, our board is not. Is not going to take any type of action concerning that. If, if they had done something out of that area, yes, we would, we would have done something. But I'm here to answer any questions you may have concerning.
Does anybody have a question for Steve? I, I do. Go ahead. I mean. What we need to know is. Has any. Has anybody put in for another grant to replace that section that wasn't done or even all, I mean. The base and everything is done at this point. I believe they could, uh, probably chip farther than it was.
The application period is open right now. None of the commissioners has expressed a project to me as yet, and I usually help them with, with that. So. Uh, now's the time if they're going to apply. I will say, we're just like everybody else in the state. We've been cut pretty heavy. But, uh, there's still about twenty two thousand, uh, to apply for. To work on that, on that stretch of road. If they so choose, like I say, it's up to them. I.
Well, because I spoke to you, I was on the call to double check that, that it would, because I was concerned that we would lose.
Yes.
That we wouldn't be able to do our road because in, on your records, it shows that our roads aren't been done.
It's, it's been far enough, and, and I might have mentioned it to you, I've talked to a number of people. It's been like four years or so. Uh, I've had some commissioners come back and normally do a heavily traveled road in that period of time. So it's, it's not uncommon and doesn't, you know, raise.
It's not going to affect our ability to go back on it, just because in your side, it's already been done, as far as your records show.
Been done a while back, you know, and we wouldn't, wouldn't even raise an eyebrow.
And that's good, but it's, it's not that in question. I mean. It's the two, three years leading up to that time, what we were told where that money went, it went back, it wasn't used. He got different money to do that road that he did. When he went into office, we're the ones that told him the Kettle money was there to do road eleven eighty. Then he knew it. Why he didn't do it there, I have no idea. That's, that's the question. He led us on for two, three years about when he never received the money, it went back, just all kinds of stuff. I mean, that's what we, I mean, it's good that you, you know, work with them if they missed the road, maybe. That's not what happened. And we all know that. Uh. Leading up to that, so. I mean, I wish he was here, but he's not, so I don't, I don't know. What else to talk about?
This twenty two thousand, is that per commissioner or split among three?
No, that's per, if they elect to do three applications. Then that will be for each commissioner.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Show you how this program suffered.
Go ahead.
When we were fully funded, it was thirty six thousand. At one time, it was thirty nine thousand. We can really do some road, but they have just.
Well, it. Four years ago, it was twenty seven.
Yes.
Twenty seven thousand.
And I'll be honest with you, I'm just proud it's there.
Yeah.
Well, too.
Yeah.
But we just wish it go where it's supposed to.
To back up on your opening statement without the. As long as it's, it's in the vicinity.
Yes.
Uh, I, I find that very hard to swallow when. If you've got a, how many miles are you talking about?
One.
One mile, okay. So if you've got a road, two roads there that's in a one mile section, and we decide, and, and you've got your paperwork saying that we're supposed to do road number one. And we just haven't decided that we're going to do road number two. Now. Any job I'm on, I don't get paid for doing the wrong stuff. Now, why is it okay to do that and still be allowed? No consequences on it? Now, answer me that.
If I had learned earlier, I would have picked up the phone and said, you need to do.
And. From, from my understanding, you've got twenty seven thousand, is that what was spent on that one road? And now you've got twenty two thousand. Well, you shortchanged them five thousand dollars.
It was twenty seven thousand.
So.
Well, that's what everybody wants to tell us. Off the register. We're talking to you guys. We're concerned people that this happens to. And we're not getting any good answer, we're, well, maybe our good answers aren't coming because we're not liking what we get. But we're still not getting it explained to us, and that's all we want.
They don't even provide us any money to go out and check.
Well, then he should have done the right road with it then.
Well, just to, just for your information, she can tell you the morning that they started it, what she asked them.
Yeah. I went down to the county barn and not talked to him, but I talked to, I think, the foreman, and he just said. We've been told to start there, you know, and I said, well.
They knew it was one of the wrong road, but he told them to put it there.
He said, that's where we have to start. I said, well, that's not what we were told, so, you know. But. Mr. Jones has been told a lot of different things over the last, he's been on it for three years, so. That, that's our biggest concern, is that he just kept telling us different things and that the money wasn't even there. Come up until May second in the meeting, he told Mr. Jones that, that he never got the money and that the money came from somewhere else and, you know. We have the papers showing where they even extended it, because he said it went back and then you, you have extended the money.
Yes. Commissioner before him had actually.
Yeah.
Gone down some money on that project.
Right. And then it was extended in April after Mr. Nolan took, you know, took. Right, and then it was extended in April after Mr. Nolan took, you know, took in so that they would have more time.
Was there any money sent back on the job?
No.
No. Mitch drew some of it, Mitch drew fifty-seven hundred dollars before he left in December. And then the rest of it was drawn in August.
And, and I, and I would have preferred that he had waited if he couldn't have finished the whole project. And that's where, if you get a transition like that, something can happen.
We're, we're happy you guys are there.
What I would do is, if there, if there's ever any question, go to your county clerk. They keep the contracts and everything related to it. If there's still some question, then by all means, call us. Because I would love to, had you called me.
In the beginning.
Yes.
Well, and we just didn't know for sure how it worked. And like I said, my biggest concern was, we didn't want them to be in trouble with you to, for us as a county to lose your funding, because we need it, I mean, as a whole.
That's, that's one reason.
When is the deadline that you want?
September sixteenth is when.
So they haven't, because the Commissioner hasn't requested it.
He hasn't, oh, we're talking about the application or the, the application, it ends September sixteenth.
So if he hasn't requested, does it, every, then they won't, they don't get it.
Can we do that?
No, that's not right, because if, if one, well, if one Commissioner holds out and other two fill out, we'll, we'll split that twenty-one thousand. And that's been done several times.
Yes.
Split it where, though, Paul?
Do what?
Split it where, in another place?
The other two districts.
Like if Marvin doesn't sign up by September sixteenth, then Clark and I'll split that twenty-one thousand.
Well, Marvin.
We'll get twenty-one plus to have, I mean, the money, there will be one Commissioner definitely apply for a REIT grant. The money will be spent in Haskell County.
But will it go to the Perry Road?
Marvin assured us in that last meeting that he would.
He's done said it two, three times that he would, he would make sure.
I'm not saying Marvin won't apply for it. I'm just saying if a Commissioner does not apply for it.
The other two.
The other two get it.
And he is correct.
I understand that.
So they may lose out and not get the Perry Road if he doesn't apply for it.
If he doesn't apply for it.
Perry Luke taking Perry, if he doesn't apply for it, right, that's what I'm, and, and.
Only, only Commissioner's gonna apply.
And if that were to happen and if he were to lose the election, then I would talk to the new Commissioner, they would apply next year.
They can't do anything till the first year, can they?
Yeah, till after the next year. And then it would be the year after that.
But when I came in office, I didn't get the REIT grant. Because Henry didn't do it and the other two Commissioners took the money. I didn't get one my first year.
Well, that's not a practice of that.
I know, I understand, all I'm saying is, is the money will be spent in Haskell County. That's all I'm saying.
Have you and Clark applied for it also?
No, I have not.
Are you going to?
Yeah, I'm gonna apply every year.
But if all three apply, then each one of them gets twenty-two thousand apiece.
Yes.
And I have it on my calendar, make sure that it is on.
I mean.
So if, if you, if they don't apply for it.
But if all, if they all three apply, then each one gets.
And I don't believe that's the way to have a project.
So if it's twenty-two thousand, instead of getting twenty-two, we would get thirty-three thousand apiece.
Steve, Steve, I have a question.
Yes.
On, on the job itself, or any job, there is sworn affidavits that those materials were purchased and signed off by all three Commissioners and the clerk in this county that it went on that job. Is that a standard procedure to, to make affidavits that are legal and binding and swearing that that's where the money went? And number, you, you said they don't give you funds or you mentioned, and I wanna make sure, for inspection, you don't have an inspector on the job?
We, we, as we tell everybody, that is the state auditor's job. Since they do not provide us any funds, our job is to make sure they draw down the money correctly. Then it's state auditor that comes behind. We, we mentioned it before, we do need some admin so we can go check. What we rely on, and I can.
I mean, with Google Earth now, you can do it from your office, basically.
That's still time. And I, this is not the only program I operate, so. That's why I would rely on something like that. For somebody, yes.
See, the citizens need to speak up quicker, earlier.
You say it's not going the right place.
Yes, and, and I've had them do that, call and question, and I fully app up contracts, say, here's what it says. And then go from there.
Well, we were just testing, we're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
And, and we were, we are forced to work on that principle also. I will say, it's been a pretty good audit system though, over the years, they're doing it twenty years and it's, it's done pretty well.
So there's no consequences on doing the job wrong?
No.
If I'm applying for it, which is wrong.
What you're saying, Paul, is it, it falls if Marvin doesn't apply for it, it's a use it or lose it situation where it'll go away if y'all don't get it right?
Well, I can assure you, if, if I'm alive, I will be applying for a REIT grant. And I know Clark will, but I'm just saying if somebody didn't, I would be more than happy to take it off.
Yeah.
The money will be spent in Haskell County.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if you don't use it, if somebody don't use it, it'll go away, right?
Right, it'll go away, but.
Well, I agree with you, you should.
We will be using the money.
It should be spent in Haskell County.
And it's pretty common that as far as the September for any Commissioner who makes a decision, like I said, you have September sixteenth, you're not gonna get to use it till next May anyway due to weather. So I mean, it's not like it's an urgent issue right now, but, you know, within the next two weeks, we do need to, we do need to fill it out.
Paul, maybe you can remind Marvin when he comes back.
I have a question, because the state auditor is the one who checks to make sure that the money is used and what, does he go automatically on his own or does somebody have to request him to do that?
No, I'm talking about when they do the county audit, book audit, on a periodic basis.
They don't physically drive on the road.
Yes, no.
Okay, well, wouldn't they do the audit and then, they just left here, and if he finds something wrong?
It's usually in, you're talking about being in the books.
But how are they gonna know? How is the state auditor gonna know that it went to the wrong place?
Oh, they're not gonna know.
Exactly.
And I can't either, unless somebody speaks up.
That's what I'm trying to get, I mean.
Yeah. There's not gonna be a footnote in, in the county clerk's books that he put on wrong road and flagged, that's not gonna happen.
Steve, I appreciate you coming and letting us know what's going on.
How, how often, Steve, does this happen, a year?
A year?
In the state? I mean, this is pretty irregular.
I, I can't remember it ever happening.
That it went on the wrong road.
At least not in my, in my area, in our seven county district. If it did, nobody spoke to.
I have a child right now, I'd volunteer for him if he needed to.
Yeah, and we, we've had citizens call and question different things and I'll be happy to look and see.
I didn't fully understand what you said, is that the money was used on the wrong road, but the paperwork said it was used on your road?
Exactly. Yeah, we've got.
So somebody files some false paperwork?
Yeah, well, they all signed off on it, so.
Well, that REIT.
I mean, I understand Paul, he was not checking on Marvin, you know, they just signed the PO.
Well, like I said before, when, when you all and Chip, you stockpiled your rock. With those roads being that close together and he was stockpiling rock.
And it started by the previous Commissioner.
I mean, when he stockpiled the rock, I, I was, I mean.
Well, the, the previous Commissioner started on the right road. Why he didn't continue, I don't know.
But if they apply for it, it'll, it'll stay in Haskell County and in law.
Probably don't cross the hill, so. I don't wanna go transferring money.
Hey, you can figure sure of one thing. That sixty-six thousand dollars will be spent in Haskell County.
But, but I'm, I'm confused, if, if you apply and you get twenty-two and you apply and you get twenty-two and Marvin doesn't apply.
We get thirty-three apiece.
So you're, you're guaranteed the sixty-six. You're guaranteed it, as long as somebody applies, right?
Right.
Okay, okay.
But Perry Luke ain't, Perry Road ain't guaranteed to get fixed.
Well, I mean, that's.
Paul's gonna remind Marvin.
That takes Commissioners prerogative if they wanna fill it, if they wanna apply. You know, when the survey job started through the CED, there were some Commissioners said, that's a pie in the sky and they didn't fill out, hey, we, we spend eighty-four million dollars a year through the survey plan. And that, you know, so.
It'd make me happy if they just actually agreed with it.
Well, without any more discussion on that, we're gonna move to item number eleven. Robin Ray, you know, Debbie McCoy, to discuss the use of quarter cent sales tax.
Well, we just had heard that you're gonna vote on that and our concern is for the entire county and it sounds like you guys are planning to just use a portion, whatever is it, whatever needs to be used to make up the difference in the, from the half cent. And that's what, that's all we're hoping for, we, we just don't wanna lose the entire quarter cent because our other county offices depend on that and they generate money for the county and provide services for our county and we just hoped you would take in consideration that and, you know, the advice that Kerry Patton had given and that Gail gives, you know. And just keep, keep us in mind too, our, you know, all the county offices.
My way of thinking is, you know, as of right now, the carryover looks good. And I understand the carryover, when you take out and don't put back, I know there's a budget. But I feel like for the time being, you know, we ought to try to pay our debt. And that's the reason I'm talking to the bond attorney. Because I personally, I'm just one person, I'm not gonna speak for Marvin and Clark, but I would like to set up and add members to our trust authority to see if we can't get together and find prisoners or find another source of income. That's what I'm wanting to do, but I'm just wanna vote. But, but we are speaking with the bond attorney. If it's okay with Marvin and Clark, we're gonna amend that, that part of the paperwork so we can add members. And that is in the process now. Because we may, we may can get prisoners, as Randy stated, it's thirty-two dollars a day. So we, we kinda know what to charge, you know, we can do the math, figure out if it's worth it or. My plan is another source of income. But I don't, you know. We're just gonna do everything we can to keep from going into fall. But I mean, that's just my plan that I would like to see happen. When we get through with the bond attorney, we'll, I'm sure we'll be voting on it and going from there.
We just, that was our, our concern, we just, you know, want y'all to keep all the offices in mind and we are depending on the twenty-five, you know, the quarters.
Would definitely be, that's definitely gonna be in the equation.
And, I mean, you know, we did have a good carry on, I'm thankful for that. That it might not always be good and we just don't want to pledge that away when we may be.
Well, I don't plan to pledge it all away. But like I said, I'm hoping by next month, when we get this amended and we add some people to the trust authority, and maybe we can get all, get together and figure out a different way to pay for it or, you know. We might get some prisoners. I mean, because when I first come from Missioner, we were getting prisoners and it helped, and it helped a lot, so. But I do believe it will be happening pretty fast, but this bond attorney, you know, he's gonna make that amendment to where we can add members. Going from there.
I have a question, will you have to sign a resolution to use the quarter cent to pay for the jail debt? Will you have to, in a resolution, will you have to designate that?
No, I don't, I don't think we'll have to do that because, I mean, Farley Ward deemed, correct me if I'm wrong, Rock or Randy, if I, if I do not want to misquote or DA, but he says, I never thought it was legal to use general fund money to pay for anything that wasn't the county, but Farley said it was, so that's good enough for me. But he's, the jail, I'm assuming, Rick, am I right, he considered that county property?
The way I understood it.
That's the way I understood it, Rock or Randy.
County government, yeah.
County, that was considered county government.
County is a beneficiary when it's all said and done.
Right, so, but anyway, the bond attorney did say that the ballot the people voted on for a quarter cent sales tax would overrule any decision the Commissioners made. So when Farley come back and said that the jail is county government use, well, then that, you know, that quarter percent, what quarter percent are you talking about? I mean, you could say the quarter percent, we voted on the quarter percent that's in there, I mean.
Well, the two thousand and fourteen, that was what we were talking about.
But whenever you're saying quarter percent or paying the jail payment, the way I understand it now, it doesn't, doesn't have to come down to that quarter of work kind of thing. It's all in the general funding. But to answer your question though, I, I personally do not plan on jeopardizing the courthouse. But we're gonna do everything we can to pay this debt.
Well, we're for that, we're not, we're not against paying the jail debt at all. We want that too and there just has to be a good middle ground there where we can all work together.
That's what we're trying to read. As, as said before and earlier, make sure everybody understands that, that the quarter was pledged to the refinance and the junior debt. What we're trying to do is not take the full quarter out of the general, just prey upon the Commissioners to, and they agreed to do this, and, and seconded by Farley's opinion, that we'll only take the shortcoming of the tax. Hopefully our taxes will go up and it's not gonna be as severe. But on the other hand, if it goes down, it's gonna be more severe. Last month was eighty-two hundred dollars for an instant, just so that they know the fluctuation. This month, I believe Gail said it's eleven thousand one hundred dollars. So there's a, there could be a three, four, five thousand dollar swing month by month. None of us are gonna know what that is until it happens. But right now, if we can satisfy the bank by making the escrow deposits as they should be, then they won't come after that full three-quarter, I don't believe. If, if they come after the full three-quarter, they'll get the full three-quarter because it hasn't been pledged to them along with the half. So right now, we're, we're basically sixty or seventy thousand dollars a year better off by just making our payments. And that's what we're trying to do, is hit a happy medium. With that being said, we don't wanna forget about the junior loan, which is due in first of April, two thousand twenty-four. At that time, if we don't find another avenue for collecting some sort of income or, or generating an income in two thousand twenty-four, less the paint, the money that we haven't borrowed and took out from the four hundred and fifty thousand, we're gonna have to cough up nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for that, those two payments in two thousand twenty-four. That's the bombshell. And we've got some avenues that we're gonna work on to try to get that money gathered up. Don't know if they'll be successful or not, but we, we're not giving up, we're gonna keep trying. At that time, if, if we fail at generating some income to service that debt, then without a doubt, it's gonna take the full quarter. And that's nothing that we have to do with, that's just what's been pledged to the bank to suffice the debt.
Just time the bank is satisfied, we'll just stay current with it.
The bank hasn't said they're satisfied.
Well, they're just gonna live with it, yeah.
Well, the paper, Rock, that like Clark mentioned, and it's in writing, we, the quarter percent is just a, like a security, I mean, if we're making the payment, the quarter percent is irrelevant. According to what we signed right here.
The depositary agreement says a portion of the one-fourth of one cent sales tax approved February eleventh, twenty fourteen, necessary to pay any insufficiency. So the quarter percent is not pledged, it's just whatever part of it's necessary.
Well, that's, it's not over making the payment.
And hopefully the revenue.
And hopefully the revenue will go up in the county either with the economy or. Everybody in the room can help it go up. Look, we need to make sure that we shop at home. Send our tax dollars in Haskell County. Anybody with a tax-free card, need to make sure they're spending it on it for what it's meant for. There's several ways that the entire county can help. The main thing is when you buy something, shop at home if you can. There's some things that I understand you can't get here. But anything that you can would help toward increasing the revenue, so we wouldn't have to pull as much out of the quarter percent.
And we do, we do shop at home as much as possible.
Well, I should thank you for being here.
Thank you for listening.
But I'm sure, I mean, I, we do not plan on breaking the court out.
We all do a right to.
But we're gonna do everything we can to pay this debt. So, but we do not plan on breaking the court out. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Item number twelve is gonna be discussed and possibly the signing of a resolution for improved environmental, and that's just, that's it there.
What does that pertain to, Paul?
That's one of his search jobs on a road project, bridge and road project. I haven't been out to the actual road, but. Just cocking it. That, that's just the process we have to go through to make sure there's no baring beagles and little bats. You know, another one of those, uh.
I understand.
Government issues, those government issues that are on your hands, you know, it's well.
I'll make an opportunity to play somebody you can't do.
I'll second that, yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Rhonda. Well, she did, she needs to say, and you all need to get to DA sense, and then it needs to say mail to Gary Harrison. And oh, listen, you don't need this far. At least there this is a. That's just to ease my, like, you know, you don't, you don't have to use them, but you just wanna do that. Oh, you do? He told me to give it to you, that's all I remember. And this here, is this? Scott, get this in there. Is this, I know this is environmental paperwork, does this thing go with Gary? That probably. Well, I thought we called each other, that's all I mean. Even by a minute. So Gary Harrison, I know about that. But you left your DA's sign, that's, you left your head. Steve, I think you're up again.
No, I didn't have to be here for that, but that is, she should put it that.
Discussing to the signing of a blank resolution for Ketto.
That is the re.
This is what you're putting in for?
No. This is for the commissioners to sponsor, they have to sponsor every application in the county. This will also cover the money on the economic and development side that fire departments can apply for and things like that. This way then can do one resolution instead of having many applications.
My second step.
Yes.
Guys, take five lessons for three twenty-four, eight claim corners, pay landowners on Star Road. Clark makes a motion on item number four, ten, one, two, three.
Roll call, Paul Ford.
Yes. Item number fifteen, we're discussing to the signing of collection boards disaster recovery plans. Sweet disaster, you're ready for it? Is that what you're telling me?
You know, disaster, here we go.
So you're gonna public that, right? See, we're doing this, but like all of them. I'm gonna make that motion. I'll say.
Roll call, Paul Ford.
Yes.
Yes.
Item number sixteen will be discussed and consider signing July month of court, the court clerk.
I, I've got a question. Uh, do you, do you know in rough numbers, how much money is owed to the county in fines and violations of some collective?
I don't have a tall number, but it's a lot of money.
Is there anything, any way that we can turn these over to the collection agencies or anything to?
They are, they are turned over to collection agencies.
Would, is it, is it viable thing? Is it?
I'm gonna say it works for twenty percent. I'm just gonna guess twenty percent. They, they go after it, but I mean, their means are like any other collection company. They, they say and do things that are not true, you know, that's the only problem I have with them. But I mean, after a warrant's been sitting for two months and the sheriff has not served it, I do send those cases to collection. A lot of money is added on to the fees. Once that scent that they do get, it's nothing to do with our county. So, you know, that's kind of a, a big expense that we try to watch and make sure that our people.
But the big expenses to the, the person in question?
Yes.
But it's not to the county?
No, it's not to the county.
Yeah.
Can I ask?
I got, damn, excuse, we're gonna sign this place paper, then we're gonna open it back up for discussion, but I just wanna finish this one deal on the agenda. And we'll, and then I will, we'll speak about this, is discuss and consider signing the former state bank for re, for financing for Tom Hall Fire Truck. That's just the annual, that's just the yearly, yeah, because you know, county can't go in debt for more than a year.
This is Fire Truck area, correct?
Correct. They're just renewing.
Renewing their lease?
Yeah, renewing the lease is all it is. My second pair. Yes.
Yes.
That's all they can say, that. Okay, that's the end of the agenda, but I'll make a, I was at the jail the other day, Randy. And I know this is not gonna work for very many people, but I'm walking back through there and there's this guy hollers at me and I go over to talk to him and he said, man, can you help me out? And I said, what, what's your problem? He said, tell me what his problem was. And I said, I'll tell you what, I said, I'll, I'll pay on your fine, but I said, I ain't giving you nothing. I said, and if you wanna work it out, I'll go pay on the fine and get you out of jail. So I did. And I worked him for two days.
How'd you come out on that deal?
Good. He done everything I asked him to do.
There's thirty-one more of them.
I, I understand. I understand that, but I'm just saying for some, I mean, you know, it weren't that good for me. Now, I'm not saying the national might rob you blind, I don't know, but I told him, I said, hey, if you don't do what you say you're gonna do, we're not gonna leave the sheriff's department. I said, I'm gonna take care of myself. And I hate, and you know what? I, I will got my money's worth, that'll work with him. I mean, he worked it out and he's a man of word and everything went good. So that's one lesson we had to take.
Paul, can I ask, can I ask? I don't understand your job, so I'm, I'm asking.
Okay.
Uh, these people that don't pay their fines?
Yes.
Okay, let's say that they commit the crime in Haskell County, it's just, uh, whatever. So they don't pay their fines, you know, seven or eight thousand dollars, you turn them to collection. When, when they do collect that, does it come back to be used in our county government?
Yes. Well, the part of it is the sheriff's fees. But there's, you know, it's separated in a lot of different entities that we collect for all across the state of Oklahoma. But we collect the sheriff's fee part, the V O J part, which is for the jail, and also for courthouse security. That's three accounts. Is that the only three?
The only three that the sheriff gets, but then if it's a wildlife ticket, uh, the fine is divided between the state general fund and the county general fund. So part of that fine would go to the county.
Well, I'm mainly speaking of thieves that have, have stolen property in Haskell County. That have never been made to pay this. So in essence, they're stealing for free.
Are you talking about, are you talking about the fine and cost or the restitution that they've been ordered to pay?
Yes, they're not, I mean.
Restitution.
We, we don't collect restitution.
District Attorney's Office collects restitution.
So you don't get none of that?
That goes back to the.
That's supposed to go back to the people that stole from them?
Yes, yeah, the county does not receive that. It's not collected by our office. They pay it where they pay their probation fees in the district attorney's office. I mean, we, we work our very best to, you know, to work with them, just like Paul said, when someone was in jail. I mean, the judge and I try to work and get them a deal where you can get them out and that they don't, you know, charge the county more money. Because we can't make any money with them sitting in there. That's one reason, I mean, we don't issue a warrant when it's only been thirty days or something, because it takes a lot of people just for that paperwork to go around when. I mean, I spend my day calling, calling people, you know, sending letters and we have a, a way to collect through Oklahoma Tax Commission and I, I use that. You know, and at a certain time of the year, it's real good when people get taxes, so.
But it doesn't come back to help us?
Who, who funds all the rehab that they go to? Who, who pays for the rehab that all these people go to?
Someone in the state, I mean.
Tax payer.
Well, family and, I mean. Some rehabs allow them to work and pay their own way here.
Time I'm, I'm gonna make a motion with Jeremy.
Thank you.
We can stay on this conference. Now, we can keep talking about it, the meeting just over.
I, I just need to ask a question, this is because I simply don't know. You see all the trash on our roads and stuff? Can the prisoners not be used to pick that stuff?
I used to use prisoners at District Three and they were a lot of help, but anymore, it's, they have to volunteer to do it.
Only if they're willing.
Only if they're willing and then.
Okay, I'll believe that, sure.
What happened to the warranty?
What happened to the trustee program? There used to be the.
They have trustees.
Because they used to like come to the ballpark and pick up for the Little League and fix the fence and.
Well, we've had them there at courthouse, mow the grass and weed eating, but that's.
They have to want to come.
They have to want it.
Let's start to say, because I know when Casey Borders was over, they liked to come to the ballpark. They did a wonderful job. They sure got desolate.
One big problem is the sheriff's office doesn't have the staff to watch.
Yeah, because I knew Casey would bring them and a bus and he'd sit there and watch.
We had to pick them up for the county use. We had to pick them up, we had to feed them, we had to take them back, picking them up wasn't no big deal, but. I don't guess that's big a deal, feeding them, but you are responsible for all of them.
I got a bus, I call them red.
Well, they're at the ballpark, I mean, Casey was different and they would fix.
Go ahead, ask them.
Steve, I really appreciate you coming and, uh, okay. Because three years ago, when I started all this, I didn't know anything about Ketto.
Our intention, you know, we didn't want to take any action that would in turn come back on District Two.
Thank you, girl.
That's what we're trying to afford and get the right program.
We just appreciate whatever.